It is the regular meeting of the city of council of the city of Cottonwood held July 19th, 2016 at 6:00 PM at the council chambers building. Deputy clerk, please take the roll.
Council member Pratt.
Here.
Council member Allen.
Here.
Council member Howery.
Here.
Council member Norman.
Here.
Vice Mayor Pfeiffer.
Here.
Mayor Jones.
Here. The next item is the pledge of allegiance, if you'd all stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation in their own right, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If we could all just take a moment to give tribute to our fallen police officers in the past few weeks.
And another one today.
Today, and yesterday, and the day before. Thank you. The next item is a brief summary of current events by mayor, city council, and city manager. The public body does not propose, discuss, deliberate, or take legal action on any matter brought up during this summary unless the specific matter is properly noticed for legal action. Mr. Bartosz.
Madam Mayor, council members, our youth commissioners did their end of the year trip. They did the ropes course up in Flagstaff. And I'm very proud to announce that the president of the youth commission, Gunnar Tillman, has been selected to serve on the governor's youth commission. So Cottonwood will be represented. We have a resignation on our P&amp;Z commission. Mr. Cox has had to step down, and so we'll be advertising that position shortly, but if anybody's interested, please check our website. We'd love to have more folks on it. And that's it, Madam Mayor, other than if you've been over to the recreation center this summer, boy, it's just crazy over there. All kinds of people using it, and a lot of kids, which is very nice to see.
It's great to keep them busy and occupied, doing something positive, and it's a great thing. Council members, anything going on in your lives? Just kind of looking at my schedule for the past few weeks. Council member Pratt and I met with Chris Mays, who used to be on the corporation commission board, and she's now representing the solar industry. And we met at the Red Rooster and just learned a little bit more about solar. And we shared all of the projects that we have in our city that the council's approved, which is a great number of solar projects. And they were very pleased. And in addition to what the city's done, we have the schools. That was a joint effort between APS and our schools. So we have a lot of solar at Mingus, and we have a lot of solar at Cottonwood Oak Creek Middle School. With the number of, I had the data, but with the number of residential solar, or solar, solar what?
Installations.
There you go. It's like project word kept trying to come out. Installations, residential installations, and the commercial, we're producing 5.5 megawatts of energy. Okay. And I think that figure was for not just Cottonwood, it was for the Verde Valley. But that's pretty impressive. Okay, moving on to the next item is presentations. Presentation of a check in the amount of $200 to the American Legion Riders Post 25 for their annual picnic and barbecue for veterans to be held at the Prescott VA Hospital and VA domiciliary. So gentlemen, if you want to come up and share your presentation. You want to just, yes, just share a little bit about what you're planning, the barbecue, and what that all means.
Each year, a district aid of the American Legion Riders, which encompasses Prescott, Prescott Valley, Dewey-Humble, Chino Valley, Cottonwood, and Camp Verde. That group of American Legion Riders gets together, puts together a barbecue for the VA hospital in Prescott, the staff, for both the staff and the patients at the hospital, to no cost to the staff or the patients. And each year, we appreciate your contribution, your support of that organization, so that we can share a good time with the folks at the VA hospital. We'd also like to thank you for your continued support of the Welcome Home Vietnam Vets efforts within the valley.
Great. And we're working also on the Viet, or not Vietnam this time, but the military service part, Verde Valley Military Service Park. So Bill, do you want to introduce yourself and for the record?
Sure, I'm sorry. My name's Bill Gamm, the director of the American Legion Riders at Post 93 in Camp Verde. And John McDowell is the point of contact for the district with John Moffett. So he gets the word from on high, and it goes down to me, and therefore I'm here this evening.
Thank you very much. Did you get those names, or do you need to ask again for your record?
I, I, yeah.
You got them?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, so council, you want to come up to give the check for the veterans, barbecue in Prescott at the hospital? We'll let our Vietnam vet deliver the check tonight. Okay, the next item is call to the public. This portion of the agenda is set aside for the public to address the council regarding an item that is not listed on the agenda for discussion. However, the council cannot engage in discussion regarding any item that is not officially listed on the agenda for discussion or action. Comments are limited to a five-minute time period. Item number, approval of minutes, regular meeting of July 5th. Did I miss something? Did you want to ask if anything? I missed the call to the public after I announced it. Call to the public. So we would like to invite the public to come up and speak, and there are little forms in the back that you can sign so that the clerk can add your name to the record. So would anybody like to speak in the public? Call to the public. Okay, we'll close the floor to the public and the approval of the minutes, regular meeting of July 5th, 2016. Did anybody find anything? We'll open the floor to the public, reopen it. Maybe it's for the next item or future item, I think.
Yeah. I move to approve the regular meeting minutes of July 5th, 2016.
Who was the first second, huh? So Mr. Pratt made the motion, Ms. Allen seconded it, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Motion carries. Comments regarding items listed on the agenda are limited to a five-minute time period per speaker. Consent agenda. The following items are considered to be routine and non-controversial by the council and will be approved by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member or a citizen so requests, in which case the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered in its normal sequence on the agenda. Item number one is donation of portable water tanks to the Navajo Nation. Item number two is remote tasting room liquor license application submitted by Maynard Keenan for Caducea Cellars LLC to be located at 1001 North Main Street, Merkin Vineyards, Australia. Item number three is resolution number 2849 approving a modification to the intergovernmental agreement with the Arizona Department of Revenue for the administration, collection, audit, and licensing of transaction privilege and use taxes imposed by the city. Item number four is community agency funding agreement with the Old Town Center for the Arts. Item number five is funding agreement with the Verde Valley Senior Citizens Association. Item number six is community agency funding agreement with the Old Town Association. Item number seven is application for extension of premises liquor license permit submitted by Tamara Morkan and That Brewing Company, located at 300 East Cherry Street, for an event scheduled for August 27th, 2016. Item number eight is recommend approval of a special event liquor license application to be submitted by James Anderson, applicant for the Old Town Association for the Thunder Valley Rally event to be held September 16th and 17th, 2016, in Old Town Cottonwood. Item number nine is application for temporary extension of premises patio permit submitted by Donald Riffel, licensee for Main Stage, located at 1 South Main Street, for an event scheduled for September 16th and 17th, 2016. Are there any items that someone would like to pull for discussion from the consent? Are there any items that someone would like to pull from the consent agenda for discussion from members of the public? I would entertain a motion, Ms. Allen, do you want to?
Absolutely, I move to approve the items on the consent agenda as presented.
Okay, so Ms. Allen made the motion, Ms. Norman seconded it, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number 11, new business. The following items are for council discussion.
Madam Mayor.
I think there's a resolution in the consent.
I'm just moving right along here. I have, I circled it so I wouldn't forget. Deputy clerk, please read resolution number 2849 by title only.
Resolution number 2849, a resolution of the mayor and city council of the city of Cottonwood, Arizona, approving a modification to the intergovernmental agreement with the Arizona Department of Revenue for the administration, collection, audit, and licensing of transaction privilege and use taxes imposed by the, posed by the city. Madam Mayor.
Thank you. You never let me get by with it, though. Okay, new business. The following items are for council discussion, consideration, and possible legal action. Item number one is resolution number 2848, I'm circling it, approval, approving the form and authorizing the execution and delivery of a second purchase agreement, a second trust agreement, an escrow trust agreement, a continuing disclosure undertaking, an obligation purchase contract, and other necessary agreements, instruments, and documents. Approving the sale and execution and delivery of not to exceed $13,75,000 aggregate principal amount of pledged revenue refunding obligations, evidencing a proportionate interest of the owners thereof in the purchase agreement, delegating authority to the mayor, manager, and finance director of the city to determine certain matters and terms with respect to the foregoing authorizing the taking of all other actions necessary to the consummation of the transactions contemplated by this resolution and declaring an emergency. Mr. Rodriguez.
Yes, Mayor, council, today we were coming with an opportunity for the city to do some refinancing.
Roger, could you turn out some of the lights? Thank you.
And we're looking to take the opportunity to refinance our Greater Arizona Development Authority loan, the GADA loan that they're called, with a pledged revenue refunding obligation, a series 2016. As a reminder, the GADA loan was the financing mechanism for the recreation center, the expansion of the library, expansion of the pool, the acquisition of property from Yalapai County to expand the parking area for the recreation center, and then also we were able to improve the Mickelson, the now Mickelson Parkway. The refinance, and I have Grant Hamill from Stifel Nicolaus, that will, that will go over some of the numbers. We're looking to save approximately $1.4, $1.5 million, and at a cost of $100,000 to, as far as the transaction costs are concerned. We're not extending the loan itself, it's keeping the exact same term. We're actually acquiring, we're looking to do the refunding now rather than next year when they're actually callable, so we can take advantage of the low interest market. In your packet, you have a sample of what the documents are going to look like. We had a due diligence call yesterday morning to go over some of the items that were still pending. Very good call. It's always nice to talk to somebody that understands the finances for the city of Cottonwood, and also it's interesting to also listen to how all of this is going to transpire over the next month or so. With that being said, I'd like to have Grant Hamill go over the, his presentation.
Thank you very much, Rudy. Mayor Jones, members of the council, manager Bartosz, Grant Hamill, managing director with the firm of Stifel Nicolaus. It's a pleasure to be here again this evening to talk to you about another potential debt refinancing opportunity available to the city in order to reduce a portion of your debt service costs on some of the obligations that Rudy described in his introduction. This is an opportunity we have been tracking with the city manager and finance director for quite some time, and now interest rates have dropped to the point where it has become feasible, we think, for the city to consider moving forward with this in the low-interest rate environment that we are in. Madam Mayor, members of the council, unlike the previous refinancings that we have worked on together with regards to the water infrastructure finance authority to refinance the MPC bonds, as Rudy mentioned, the particular bonds we are reviewing now were issued back in 2007 to fund the acquisition of several municipal projects that Rudy mentioned, including the rec center, library, public safety facilities, and park improvements. The debt service of those bonds is being paid from the general fund. So any savings that might result from a potential refinancing would benefit the general fund as opposed to the water and wastewater enterprise fund. And as Rudy mentioned, I have a brief presentation to go over tonight just to discuss with you some of the aspects of this proposal. I'd like to start, Madam Mayor and council members, with a chart of interest rates. Rudy, if you could move to the next slide. Perfect. This is a chart of two different interest rates over the past 12 months. The blue line represents the U.S. Treasury 10-year note rate over the last 12 months, and then the red line represents the 10-year high-grade municipal bond yield over the past 12 months. And as you can see, there's been a pretty dramatic decline in interest rates over the past 12 months. In fact, the 10-year treasury rate has come down a full 80 basis points over that period of time. Now, why have rates come down? This is something that you're reading about in the newspaper quite a bit now. I'll give you three main reasons why this is happening. The slowing economic growth in the U.S. economy, and also the international markets, including China. Negative interest rates that exist in other countries. For example, in Germany right now, if you invest your money in buying a 10-year German treasury bond, that yields a negative 3 basis points. So when you look at our 10-year treasury rate, which yields about 1.5, that looks like an attractive interest rate. So investors are looking at the U.S. Treasury market because they can get some positive yield that they can't get in other markets. Then finally, when interest rates come down, what that typically means is that investors are moving more of their money, their investment money, into the safety and security of U.S. Treasury securities because they're generally afraid of the markets, whether it be the stock market or other markets out there, and they're wanting to preserve their principle in very low-yielding investments. So these are the three primary reasons that I offer for why interest rates have come down so dramatically. Next slide, ready? As Rudy mentioned, the particular financing that we're looking at, and I apologize, you can't read this too well, is these bonds that were issued by the Greater Arizona Development Authority on behalf of the city. Right now, there is $13,75,000 of bonds outstanding, and they're outstanding at a current interest rate of 4.6%. Keep that in mind as we go forward in our discussion. Next slide, ready? And what we're talking about, and this is the annual debt service associated with these bonds. You have the principal column, the interest rates, the coupons that range from 4% to 5%, and then you can see your annual debt service that the city is paying right now is a little over 1.5 million. And when the investors bought these bonds, it was with the understanding that the city was going to offer a revenue pledge against these bonds. And the revenue pledge is the 2/10ths limited sales tax and also state shared revenues. So this is not a full sales tax or excise tax pledge, but a partial excise tax pledge that was offered on these bonds. Next slide, ready? Now, that debt service that you just saw is represented in column one, and as you can see, it totals about $17 million out to the year 2027. And what we are proposing to the city is the issuance of a new series of bonds that's reflected in columns two, three, and four. Those particular bonds, we feel, could be issued in the market today at a rate of about 2.17%. So we're looking at an interest rate for that remaining term that's roughly less than half of what the interest rate is now on those bonds. And of course, that's subject to change based upon market conditions, but using a conservative scale, we estimate that the savings as represented in column five is approximately $146,000 per year, and that's a benefit, direct benefit to the general fund. That totals, as Rudy mentioned, about 1.5, 1.6 million. In today's dollars, that represents a little bit under 1.4 million. So it's a pretty attractive opportunity for the city with the direct benefit to the general fund. Now, what we would propose to investors on this particular sale is that the city provide the same revenue pledge as it did last year when it sold excise tax revenue bonds, and that is a full excise tax pledge. And that way, we can get the highest credit rating on the bonds and the lowest interest rate by making that pledge. And that's a pledge of city sales taxes and state shared revenues. And so after this sale, the city will have two separate excise tax secured obligations outstanding in the market. This will be the second one. And once these bonds are issued, this old 2007 Greater Arizona Development Authority bond will effectively go away and be replaced by the lower-interest rate bonds. Now, the timetable, as Rudy mentioned, if the council decides to go forward with this refinancing, the schedule is that we would work with the city staff and the bond attorneys to complete this bond sale in the next four to six weeks. So we estimate by the end of August, we would close the obligation issue and deposit the proceeds into an escrow that would be used to retire the 2007 GADA obligation. So with that, Mayor, members of council, I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions?
So ultimately, refinancing doing this bond is going to save the city about $1.3 million.
That's correct.
Considering we've all been talking about the city's debt and what to do about the city's debt, this seems like a, I hate to say it, but a no-brainer.
So. Well, I would say, you know, most entities in Arizona that have outstanding debt have taken steps to refinance their debt. For example, we're working with the city of Phoenix now as an underwriter. They're looking to refinance about 300 or 400 million of their property tax secured bonds that are outstanding, but they also have revenue bonds that they'll be looking at as well. So it's an extremely attractive time to refinance. The majority of debt now being issued in Arizona is for refinancing purposes, so it's an opportune time. That's not to say six months from now or a year from now, rates are going to be lower than they are today. Nobody really knows what's going to happen on that front. So it's a matter of whether you take action now with the savings that are available or take the chance that interest rates could come down further. Most issuers are not willing to gamble and look to basically take advantage of the opportunity today.
One thing that I just wanted to share is a quote by Scottsdale Mayor Jim Lane concerning debt, and it's also references, well, it's a quote out of Goldwater Institute paper also. "There is good debt and bad debt," which is a quote out of the Goldwater Institute paper on debt. "The appropriate use of debt is to build the infrastructure that the city relies upon, whether it's streets and sidewalks, or its water lines and treatment facilities, or a public safety building or city hall, any of your hard assets." And this quote was from Scottsdale Mayor Jim Lane. You are talking about a long-term asset. You generally match long-term assets with long-term debt, so you have an even matching, the useful life of it with a steady stream of income over a longer period of time. So water companies and the recreation center, these are longer-term, I mean, when you, when you're done paying for it, you have a wonderful asset for your community, and you're able to use it as you are paying. to use it as you are paying for it, like you would a house. You don't usually have the money to go out and buy a house cash. Not many people do. And so if you need a home, you go out and you get a mortgage, and you pay it over the years as you live in it. And then when you get done paying for it, if you ever do, we will, but you have an asset that is quite valuable. And in the meantime, your community has something that they're using with the recreation center. The parking lot is always full. It's like...
Even at 6:00 and 6:30 in the morning.
Even at night. It's hard to find a parking place many times. The kids are using it. Another thing is that we, when we built the recreation center, if the council members who were on the council recall, it was supposed to bring in some economic development. It was also supposed to, you know, be a draw for doctors and professionals to come in and work and live in our city. That was something that was discussed in the studies and the market studies. So it has, one thing that we have never done, and I mentioned this to the city manager just recently, we have never done a study, and I don't, I would hope we could do one very cheaply, maybe staff or even in a U for a not very much cost, but the fact is, is that when we built the center, we felt it would be an economic draw. We felt that when people come over from the whole, and it's marketed, it was marketed for the whole Verdi Valley and Sedona, when they come to Cottonwood to go to the rec center, on their way home, they're going to stop and shop. They're going to stop and do something while they're in Cottonwood because we are the retail center of the entire Verdi Valley. So that, we have never, you know, when we talk about costs, we have never really looked at what is it bringing into the city that if the person wasn't coming over to go to the rec center, they might not stop and shop. So it's just something that, I don't know if we could come up with a figure on that, but it is something that we talked about when we built it.
We could certainly ask that, Mayor, and see if that's possible. It may be valuable to look at it from the health savings benefit to the community as well.
And that, too.
So we'll take a look at that.
The savings on insurance premiums and those types of things, too. Yes, Mr. Pratt?
Yeah, a couple of other things. The quote you had from Goldwater Institute, I found it interesting because I, as I've mentioned, I've been reading for most of the past year, a lot of documents from Standard and Poor's and Moody's and other municipal financial experts, and they all say, yes, every municipality has debt. And they have a phrase that I thought was kind of curious, but applies in this case, and they called it acceptable debt. So Goldwater is really supporting that. And again, with the rec center, I think it's important for people to remember that that was a referendum and the people voted for that.
Yes, sir.
And the people wanted, and you're correct, I go there pretty much every morning, 6:00 to 6:30, and it's packed. And I talk to people, and it's people from all over the Verdi Valley, and they've got to be spending money somewhere in their travels here. So, yeah, I think it's a real asset to the city, certainly health-wise, and it enriches people's lives. So I like the idea of the acceptable debt, and you just don't want to get too much acceptable debt. We may be at that point now, but...
And if you recall, when we used to have a large meeting in the city of Cottonwood, we had to go to the casino in Camp Verdi to hold that meeting because there was nothing here that was, that could hold it. So those are just some thoughts that I had. Casey, did you have something?
Yeah, if you don't mind, you brought it up, and I can't help but answer the question. You know, just for instance, one way that we make money off the rec center is we had the Small Business Development Center here a couple of weeks ago. They had their annual conference here in Cottonwood. There were like 75 or 80 people. They all stayed in our hotels. They all ate our food, you know, and they used the rec center. So I mean, I think the rec...
Hopefully, they stopped and got gas, too, before they went home.
Yeah, so I think the rec center, you know, they went there. It is an economic development tool. They all come and they love it. The same couple of days, we had the Arizona Association for Economic Development here. There were 45 people here, same time. So 80, 90, 100, and 10, 120, 130 people were using the rec center that probably hadn't been here before. And they were staying in our hotels, eating our food, buying our gas, you know, doing what people do when they come to our community. And so I just wanted to, you know, that's a, for instance. So we could probably start keeping track of, and I'm sure every day, there's people using the rec center that come here from other communities, and it's adding value to our community. So I couldn't help but jump in and at least say that. And I do think it'd be easy enough to start keeping track of that and adding it up over time, and I think we'd come up with a big added value to our community. But that's just something I wanted to throw in there.
Any other questions before we ask the public to input? Anything else you want to share? Richard, is there anything you want to add about the topic at all? Or has anybody that is affected day-to-day in the operations?
Yeah, just a few seconds. I do know that one of the things, too, in the past is, I think it was three years ago or so, three and a half years ago, that the real estate market also was interesting because there was actually individuals that sell real estate indicating that they had direct contact from people that stated, we did have a recreation center. They were interested in it, especially from a lot of the professional ranks, from the hospital, doctors, things of that nature. So people were buying here because of that. And so they did indicate that as well. I think it actually came up before the council about that time. So that was actually another thing that we could maybe ascertain from the, you know, I guess directly from the real estate groups and companies, so that'd be something we could maybe come up with.
Thank you. Okay, anything else? Mr. Hamel?
Mayor Jones, members of the council, I would just add, as far as the use of bonding for infrastructure, that nationally, the country faces a crisis and that our infrastructure is in sore need of massive capital infusion to maintain roads, bridges, airports, et cetera.
Water pipes that you can't see.
There's not thought to be enough taxpayer money and bond proceeds available to even come and meet a fraction of those needs. So what I think is going to happen is that you're going to see more involvement from the private sector with public-private partnerships when it comes to financing major infrastructure projects. It hasn't presented itself in any significant way in Arizona, but it's being talked about quite a bit, to get companies interested in helping build roads and highways, perhaps in return for a toll road.
Code, yeah.
Airport facilities, maybe community centers in the future, where you have private dollars that are brought into the equation and some type of revenue sharing agreement, because otherwise, there's not going to be enough money to fund public infrastructure. And that's a well-known fact. So we'll see how that presents itself in the future. But I think you'll hear more at your conferences about P3, public-private partnerships. The manager has heard that, Rudy has heard that at conferences. I think it'll happen, it's just a matter of time. This is how it's done in Europe quite a bit, is bring in big consortiums that are willing to bring, you know, billions of dollars to the table to get a fair rate of return on their investment. And it could be a parking garage, it could be parking meters, it could be a highway, it could be a toll road. Everything under the sun is being looked at, and we'll see if that's an element of Cottonwood's future or some future capital project. I don't know what that could be. Municipalities are reluctant to turn their utility systems over to private entities, but there may be other services that the city may think are better off being privatized, for whatever reason. It's just something to keep in the back of your mind going forward. It's going to be an issue out there.
Right. I was just reading in Governing Magazine in the past few days that, because I'm very interested in the public-private, the P3 public-private partnerships for future road projects and things that our area will be needing, but they were giving out a little warning of how careful you have to be, that sometimes you enter those agreements, public-private partnerships, and you end up with, you know, a cat in a hat. It's just, you have to, the councils have to ask all the right questions and make sure that it really is the best thing. But, you know, they still should be encouraged, but you just have to be so careful because it's not always a positive. And that was interesting to me. I thought, I even saved it because I thought it was, wow, okay. You have to be very wise in those kinds of decisions.
That's a combination of making sure the service is provided and at what cost to your constituents.
Didn't the state just pass a law in the last year or two that makes it easier for the public-private partnerships with roads and highways?
There has been.
Because that was, we weren't able to do it because of state law, and they were trying to, I think Karen Phan, Representative Phan, was working on something to allow so that we could do those.
Yeah, we're working with the governor's office on the acquisition of the Kingman Prison, which, as you'll recall, had some riots last fall. We recommended that they actually de-privatize that, in other words, have the state buy it, because, and the price is about 130 million, but there was substantial savings to be had to the state because they were servicing the private debt of the operator on a much higher interest rate than what the state could borrow at.
So sometimes it doesn't work, and sometimes it does.
This particular facility will continue to be operated privately, but the state will buy it and save about $70 million over the next nine years. But getting back to your original point, the state has passed some laws to make it easier to do public-private partnerships. I think they did it primarily to try and help ADOT. ADOT really hasn't done a major project yet that's a P3 project, but the new South Mountain Bypass Freeway, I think for the first time, will have private maintenance, and they entered into some contract with a developer for that. That's kind of a step in that direction because, to my knowledge, ADOT doesn't have that type of arrangement around the state. So I think you're going to read more about it in the future, and like you said, Mayor, it requires a lot of due diligence and look for the right opportunities with which to invite a private entity in to provide a public service, but it will definitely happen. There's not enough, there's not enough money to provide infrastructure financing.
So we'll go ahead and take comments from our public now? Thank you.
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor and council members. I thank you very much. My name is Rose Sperry, and I'd like to address this issue on Resolution 2847. I am here representing the Verdi Village and myself, as I am a member. The estimated $250,000 of debt repayment for this loan will be paid by the 1% utility bill payers in fiscal year 2017. I wonder if this loan is not just a way of kicking the debt can down the road. Current GATA loan will be paid off in July 2027, but the GATA refinance loan does not end until 2032, which means the new, this loan pushes out the bill payers' debt payments an additional five years. Savings to the city equal $278,000. Over 15 years after cost to issue new loan, only $18,590 per year for 15 years. Again, is this not kicking the debt can down the road? The city did not post the notice about the new loan until a couple of days before the council meeting, and I will, and use, now you're going to use this clause to block the public comment and scrutiny. This is an outrage, as far as I'm concerned and as far as the Verdi villagers are concerned. There's no transparency here, there's much lack of it. I would like to mention, too, before I close, that the quote that was just made by the Goldwater Institute, about the Goldwater Institute, of which I am very familiar with, I don't think that that quote and the, I'm not sure that this city's financial situation would do them much justice, and I don't think that they would be very happy with that quote that was just made. And once again, I would like to reiterate my previous statement that we feel this is just kicking the debt can down the road. Thank you very much for allowing me to express my concerns. Thank you again.
Thank you. And Ms. Sperry, when you say that you represent the Verdi Village, you mean the Verdi Village Property Owners Association? Are you on the board?
No, I am not on the board.
A resident.
Including myself.
Okay.
And not all the residents, but the great majority. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Sherri Twomley?
I'm Madam Mayor and council members. I'm here to categorically oppose a lack of transparency in refinancing this loan. Again and again, there's a lack of transparency, there's no notice to the public, so we can scrutinize the pros and cons of these loans that we are paying for and continue to pay for because the city doesn't pay its debts. It just keeps on paying the minimum. That's like taking out a credit card loan and paying the minimum payment forever. Many generations in the future will have to pay these debts. Right now, I estimate the recreation center, which is taking in less than a million a year, is losing 1.7 million a year. That's a fact. I sent it to the news. I sent all the backup data for it. Also, I want to mention that when you take a loan out in the real world, there's called truth in lending. You know what you're getting into. You know what the terms are. You know if you pay the minimum credit cards that you pay much, much more interest. This is going on and on. This recreation center is a deeply underwater asset that isn't performing. That is not what the taxpayers deserve. Any city that's responsible does not overbuild infrastructure for recreation and things they don't have, they can't afford. And then put it on debt payers for multiple generations. It's different if it was roads. It's different if it was something that was necessary. These aren't necessary, all these services in the city. Plus, 67% of these debts are paid by people that don't live in the city. And then we have a mayor running for supervisor. It's crazy. Is that going to happen to the council, to the county? So I'm going to close in saying the use of emergency clause, the use of never telling us you're going to do these things until you put it on the website, not in the newspaper, minutes before the meeting, is not acceptable. And there's no tangible benefit to the taxpayers on this because I did the math. After you take out the insurance premium, the bond premium, pay this underwriter, and pay the trustee fees, everything else, it's $18,000 a year is net. The total is $278,000 over 15 years. Where's the benefit for extending this loan for five years? Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Do you have any?
I guess I'll answer some of these questions. First of all, the term of the bond is not being extended. It's not going out for 15 years. It's only 11 years till 2027, so that's a bit exaggerated. The utility tax has always been an issue with people. Utility tax is a general fund tax, not charged specifically to water company. It is charged to all the utility companies, and it is a general fund tax that only amounts about $240,000, which is a drop in the bucket to what the general fund, that that particular tax would be able to pay this debt. It does not even cover a portion of the debt. So the utility tax is really minor compared to all of our other revenues that support this bond. As far as the MNO on the recreation center, this is...
An MNO for the public's benefit? Thank you.
The biggest operation, we have always talked, the total amount of MNO and debt service that we pay at the recreation center is about 2.3 million dollars. 1.5 of it happens to be just a debt service. We're trying to reduce that to 1.3 to 1.4 million rather than 1.5. That would release $100,000 or so to the city of Cottonwood. The $700,000 that's remaining is a shortfall that... The seven-hundred thousand dollars that's remaining is a shortfall that we all discussed years ago, back in 2007, 2008, and we agreed to support it through general fund sales tax. So it's not anything new. The council knew about it. The public knew about it when they went to vote that we would have to use sales tax to support that particular operation, and they still voted for it. Again, the loan is, still remains with the current terms. It is not extended. We will be saving over a hundred thousand dollars a year, well over a hundred thousand dollars a year, not eighteen thousand dollars is being spoken at this point. So if there's any other additional questions, I can try to answer them. If I can, I'm sure that we can get Grant to answer.
You have any additional questions? Any other questions? Any additions, Mr. Hamel? Okay. Mr. Pratt?
Time for a motion.
Yes, please.
I move to approve Resolution Number 2848, authorizing the sale and execution and delivery of not to exceed thirteen thousand, seventeen, thirteen million, seventy-five thousand aggregate principal amount of pledged revenue refunding obligations, evidencing a proportionate interest of the owners thereof in a purchase agreement, approving the form and authorizing the execution and delivery of such purchase agreement and other necessary related agreements, instruments, and documents, delegating authority to determine certain matters and terms with respect to the foregoing, authorizing the taking of all other actions necessary to the consummation of the transactions contemplated by the resolution and declaring an emergency.
Second.
Mr. Pratt made the motion. Ms. Allen seconded it. All in favor?
All in.
All right. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, Mayor Council.
I'd like to thank you for the work that you all did on trying to save us money and a reduction in our interest rate and a reduction or more money into the general fund and money to help pay also. So thank you.
Thank you, Brian. Thank you, Brian.
Okay, Resolution Number 2848.
Resolution Number 2848, Resolution of the Mayor and Council of City of Cottonwood, Arizona, approving the form and authorizing the execution and delivery of a second purchase agreement, a second trust agreement, an escrow trust agreement, a continuing disclosure undertaking, an obligation purchase contract, and other necessary agreements, instruments, and documents, approving the sale and execution and delivery of not to exceed thirteen million, seventy-five thousand dollars aggregate principal amount of pledged revenue refunding obligations, evidencing a proportionate interest of the owners thereof in the purchase agreement, delegating authority of the mayor, manager, and finance director of the city to determine certain matters and terms with respect to the foregoing, authorizing, authorizing the taking of all actions necessary to the consummation of the transactions contemplated by this resolution and declaring an emergency. Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Okay, we can, we have two items coming up where we have out-of-town guests. One is the Verdi River Recreation Plan, and the other is the Resolution to encourage Congress to create a reliable, predictable stream of resources. I'm thinking that that one is not going to take all that long. How long will that take, Ms. Rhodes?
Five minutes.
Five minutes? Let's go ahead and move to Item Six because I do think the other one will take quite a while, like I expect it to. So if you would go ahead and come up and make your presentation. This is Resolution Number 2842, encouraging Congress to create a reliable, predictable stream of resources to address deferred maintenance needs in America's national park system.
I have a PowerPoint presentation, which I, I don't have to show, but I can show it if it's available.
So I'll just share with the audience that I knew Diana, and she worked for the Sonoran Institute in 2006, I think it was. And she was working on a, with the Nature Conservancy on a initiative, I guess, or initiative, to create some conservation for state trust lands. And they had all kinds of neat pieces picked out. I mean, a piece up here in this ten square miles, some of the headwaters of the Verdi River, and, you know, just very precious places in Arizona. And I remember I helped you with that in this area. And unfortunately, the legislature dropped a similar bill that confused the voters, and it didn't pass. But it was a good idea while it lasted. And anyway, fast forward to how many years in the future, and now she's working for Three-Sixty, what is it?
Strategies Three-Sixty is the company they work for, and it's part of a coalition with few charitable trusts and like hundreds of Arizonans, elected officials, and businesses, and nonprofit organizations, and throughout the country, working to protect our national parks. So I'm up here from Tucson tonight, and you had all this talk of economic development and economic drivers. I'm here tonight with our national parks, in support of our national parks. I'm staying at a hotel. I'm going to eat at your restaurant.
All right.
I've bought some gas here, so.
That's what we like.
I'm doing my part.
Maybe you'll use the rec center, right?
Exactly.
If you can call your boss and see if you can stay an extra day.
I know. And I was like, okay, I've got to get here.
At least just get some gas before you leave, okay?
Thank you. Thank you so much. It is the hundred-year anniversary of our National Park Service, and I don't know if you heard, there was just on NPR Today, a wonderful story about the twelve-billion-dollar backlog of infrastructure repair at our national parks. And they are America's best idea, and I don't, there's been a lot of wonderful programs about the national parks across the country. It's been very exciting this year. There's been a huge buildup for the hundred-year anniversary of the National Park Service, where the National Park Service worked within and came up with concepts around these P-three, public-private partnerships. Some people like them, some people don't. But the reality is, is there's no way to put a dent in that twelve-billion-dollar backlog if we are not being creative about how to finance all of the infrastructure repair. Our National Park Service, our men and women in uniform are doing the best they can with the resources they have. They, you might know that nineteen sixteen was the year that President Woodrow Wilson created the national park system, combining all these different places that were protected, many of them in the Department of War. So even as our country was deciding who it wants to be, people were protecting these amazing places and battlegrounds and resources and putting these, the National Park Service all together. There were something like thirty-two units in nineteen sixteen, and now there are four-hundred-and-twelve units across the country. And those come with funding resources. I mean, the National Park Service tells the story of the American people, and our stories are never-ending. So there's always a need to declare new places as either monuments or national parks or recreation areas or historical sites. All of these four-hundred-and-twelve national park units tell a different story. Oh, it's kind of dark there, but your local Tuzigoot and Monizuma and all these places create, this is in southern Arizona, but there, the people.
Is that Chiricahua?
Yeah, Chiricahua. The people of Arizona and across the country, a recent study by Harvard and other scientists say that the American people value our national parks at ninety-two billion dollars, and yet Congress hasn't recognized the value of these places. Just, I mean, just the facts economically, thirty-two billion dollars is the economic value of national parks in the, in spending and people coming to spend across the country. In Arizona, it's, you know, hundreds of millions of dollars that people spend here. But many of these places are falling apart, whether it's trails or roads or just kind of piecing them together because people want to have these amazing experiences, and the, and our men and women in uniform are doing the best that they can, but they are falling apart. Twelve billion dollars is the number. Just a few statistics, at Tuzigoot National Monument, it's four-point-three million dollars. The Grand Canyon has a, one, one-hundred-and-fifty million project that is just for a water, water. The Grand, the Trans Canyon Pipeline for water is a hundred-and-fifty million dollars. And in total, Congress provides three-hundred million dollars in maintenance, deferred maintenance every year. That's it. Three-hundred million dollars for the entire country. And just here at one national park, we have a hundred-and-fifty million dollar need. So, you know, people are doing the best they can, but we've got bridges and roads with structural problems, rotting historic buildings, trails that need help, sewage and water systems. I mean, just like your city and many of the cities across the country, so too are national parks that are generating this amazing revenue in tourism. They need our help. So we have a campaign that we've launched and that Mayor Jones has signed on to a letter, an individual letter that we have going to the U.S. House and Senate Appropriations Committees. And I invite all of you, if you individually would also like to sign on to our letter, we want to grow this list of businesses and individuals and organizations to fully represent really what our national parks bring to our communities in the form of people signing on to be leaders in this, in this project. I mean, everywhere you go, you see these signs, trails closed, building closed, because there's not enough money to maintain them. I was here earlier this year, just a few months, I met with the mayor and with the superintendent of the national park and with local businesses, prior superintendents, and we got a really good showing of people in your community to, that think that this is an issue. Canyon de Che, eighteen million. Glen Canyon National Recreation Area, forty-five million. I mean, the list goes on. Three-hundred-and-seventy-one million with just that one trans, Trans Canyon Pipeline at a hundred-and-fifty million. So these infrastructure repair delays, it's just a series of underfunding by Congress. They haven't felt the need, even though, again, this recent study says these, these places are worth ninety-two billion dollars. Congress hasn't felt the pressure. A hundred years ago, or fifty years ago, the people of Arizona and all across the country said, you know, this is an issue. We need, on the fifty-year anniversary of the National Park Service, we need to create these amazing places, and it was called Mission Sixty-Six. And so this, I don't know if you've noticed, but it's kind of like mid-century modern architecture in our visitor centers at our national parks. And that was because it was fifty years ago. It was the time they hired these amazing architects, but now they're fifty years old. So the problems that we all are facing in our cities and towns across Arizona are also happening in our national parks. And I'm just thrilled to be part of this campaign to say, you know what, Congress, you can help. You can, you can take to heart what the people of America are saying and our international visitors. Three-hundred-and-seven million visitors to our national parks across the country this year. It's growing every year. The Centennial invites the opportunity for even more opportunities to support these amazing places. I have this handout, and I, I thank you for putting this on your agenda. The, a national, the National Conference of Cities has passed this similar resolution. And then one other city in Arizona has passed it, the city of Tucson, where I used to work. I worked for a city councilwoman there. I was her chief of staff. So we're on number two in Arizona and actually on ten across the country. So if you pass this resolution tonight, you'll be a leader across the country in doing, in caring for these amazing places that are national treasures. So I have this one-page handout that I'll hand out to you.
Do we need, are you finished? Should we turn lights on?
Yep, that's it. Thank you so much. Appreciate.
Just for the lights, not that you have to hurry and leave.
Appreciate your time.
Okay, so Councilmembers, Mr. Pratt?
Yeah, this is very interesting and, again, coincidence. I've spent a lot of time in the national parks, and, yeah, they are amazing places. They're so diverse. But I just read a, and there's another reason to preserve these. I just read an article yesterday in a publication entitled "In These Times," and they've done medical studies, and they have found out that people benefit both physically and mentally from spending time in these beautiful places. In one study, people actually lowered their blood pressure by ten percent by just taking a hike in one of our parks. So when you presented it tonight, I said, oh, that's a coincidence. I just read an article all about the benefits.
I just read that too.
You read that?
Yeah, it was online, wasn't it?
No, I read it in a magazine entitled "In These Times."
Okay, I thought I read it online.
It might be online. They go online.
Yeah.
But, yeah, I think this is a, again, a very important thing for our country, and I appreciate your presentation and coming up here and spending the time and giving us the chance to be kind of pioneers in this.
Thank you.
So if you think about, of all the state parks in the Verdi Valley, we have, we had five, but now we have six because of Rockin River Ranch, right? State parks. And if you count the Greenway that has been extended for thirty-six miles to Beasley Flat, you could really count seven. So we are a wealth of state parks, and we have the three national parks, really, one is, one, two of them are one park, but I always think of them as three. And it really is a huge economic engine in the Verdi Valley. It provides a lot of visitors, and they all stay in our hotels, eat and get gas. So it, it's really, you know, when parks are being defunded a couple of years ago, and we're all fighting to keep them open, if you just think about Dead Horse Ranch State Park that is located inside the city limits, what that brings to our economy, you know, they're, they're very well worth preserving. And the state parks are facing the same exact thing. They aren't being funded for the upkeep of the buildings and the roads and the bridges. And so as, yeah, so that same thing is happening, as you've made me aware now, with our national parks. And I was seeing that Tuzigoot was looking, I think the bridge there needs some attention, and was looking like about four million dollars. So there's, there are needs right here in the Verdi Valley. So if a council had a chance to read this, are there any comments from the public on this item, national parks? If you all, what do you think about passing the resolution in support of this?
I don't think it's good.
I'm for it.
Okay. Well, then I would go ahead and entertain a motion if someone would like to make one. Vice Mayor?
I move to approve Resolution Number 2842 to encourage Congress to provide funding for maintenance of the national park system.
Second.
Okay, the Vice Mayor made the motion, and Mr. Pratt seconded it. All in favor?
All in.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And the deputy clerk will prepare the resolution and mail you a copy of it.
Thank you.
You're welcome. And thank you for driving up. And are you in Tucson now again? Or you've in Phoenix?
Yeah, I'm in Tucson.
You're Tucson, okay.
I'm here tonight.
All right. We'll have a safe trip home tomorrow. And thank you for all you do, Diana.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Deputy clerk, please read Resolution Number 2842 by title only.
Resolution Number 2842, a resolution of the Mayor and City Council of the City of Cottonwood, Arizona, encouraging Congress to create a reliable, predictable stream of resources to address deferred maintenance needs in America's national park system. Madam Mayor.
Okay, thank you very much. The next item is such an exciting one. So thrilled by this. The Verdi River Recreation Plan, Mr. Casey Rooney. And we have a few other team members here. I think Charlie Scully and who, name your team.
Okay, I'm going to do that.
You're going to do that, okay.
Yes, I am. I'm, I'm going to do a little introduction, and then our team is going to present the Cottonwood Riverfront Trails and Recreation Plan. First of all, though, I want to thank all of you for your service. I'm Casey Rooney, the Economic Development Director for the city. I want to thank you for all your service. I think it's an exciting meeting today to be talking about refinancing debt, talking about the rec center, which is a great resource, national parks. The next thing we're going to talk about is the Cottonwood Riverfront Trails and Recreation Plan. And I would like Kim Chonik to come on up. The way this all started was Kim came into my office one day, and she said, Casey, I would like to help support your community with putting together a trails plan for your, for Cottonwood. And, you know, there's been other plans. And, you know, there's been other plans put together in the Verde Valley, and it's about time that we put this plan together. And I, I also have to thank team members, besides Kim. Richard, Richard Faust and Charlie Scully have been working on these things a lot longer than I have. But Kim happened to come to me, and we talked about a forty-five thousand dollar grant, and the Nature Conservancy came along and offered that to us, and we obviously took it. And, so, Kim, thank you for that grant. Would you like to say anything to the council?
Yeah, I'd just like to thank you guys for participating in the process. You know, for the Nature Conservancy, it's great to be able to partner with the city and promote the river that's valuable to both of our communities. I mean, we're looking at it from river health and management, and you guys are looking at it as an economic resource, but also as an asset to your community. So, I think we have so much in common around that resource that we're just happy for this opportunity to develop a plan and hopefully help implement it with you guys over the next few years. Do you have this handy little brochure about some of the Nature Conservancy's work here in the Verde Valley? I'll sit on a chair back here if anybody wants to grab one on their way out.
Well, I'll take one.
Thank you guys.
Pass one around.
Okay. Pass one around.
That would be great.
Thank you, Kim.
Thank you, Kim.
So, Kim was so helpful. I mean, she provided, or the Nature Conservancy provided us this grant for forty-five thousand. It, it's money that came from the Walton Family Foundation to the Nature Conservancy, to us. And then, Kim said, go forth and conquer and put together a great plan. She backed off. Floyd Marsh came to the table from the Nature Conservancy, he sat on our team. And Christian Stumpf is the Director of External Affairs for the Nature Conservancy.
Welcome, and thank you for being here tonight, Christian.
So, I gave you a handout, and I want to go through this very quickly. I just wanted to share those dates, as you see in the first part. This was a fast-track grant.
Oh, boy, was it.
Boy, was it. And...
But it just shows that things don't have to take years and years, and you can still have a wonderful job done. I mean, this is amazing.
You know, if you look down to March eighteenth, that's when the Norris team came to the table. And the Norris team that's here today is Brian Sager. Brian, you might want to get your presentation up.
You're up.
Oh, you're up. Forget it, okay. And Aaron Hain. Brian is from Phoenix, and Aaron is from Flagstaff. And Julie Perzek, did I say that right? She was a big player in this whole thing, too. And she's a Parks and Recreation Planner from Tucson. They have offices in Denver, Tucson, Phoenix, and Flagstaff. And soon to have one in Cottonwood, right? Huh? Come on, come on.
Just say yes.
I'm working on the economic development end. So, you'll see that as of March eighteenth, we chose Norris Design, came in with an excellent proposal. We got, we received two proposals, theirs was by far the best, a real quality proposal. And then, it all started March eighteenth. So, it's taken four months to put this plan together, and that's what you're going, going to see here next. And I also would be remiss if I didn't thank the Parks and Recreation Commission. Trevor Gotzchak is here, he had a big part in this whole thing.
Thanks, Trevor.
And he's in the commission, so thank you, Trevor. And, I mean, they're the people who are gonna have to carry this thing on in the future.
Absolutely.
And you see the list down below. That is the committee. That is the group of people that met on these occasions and, you know, pushed to make this thing happen. And I just want to thank the city council and city manager for helping us to pull this thing together. And, and with that said, I'm gonna quiet down and bring up Brian and Aaron. So, here you go. Whoa, my other thing. What we're, what we're asking for tonight is your approval of the plan. The Park, are the Parks and REC Commission approved of the plan a couple of weeks ago, and now here we are, we've refined the plan, we're here to ask for your approval.
Thank you.
Thank you, Casey. Mayor Jones, members of the council, it's a, we're grateful to be here to present this plan to you. And my name is Brian Sager, I'm with Norris Design, and this is Aaron Hain, he's also with Norris Design, as we've been introduced already, so thank you. So, it's, it's our pleasure to run you through this. We've been working on this since March, and this is the summation of the efforts and the involvement of many of the members of your community and maybe many of you here today, so. The purpose of our, this document is essentially, we wanted to connect the Old Town area with the Verde River Recreation Area and Riverfront Park. You've got really great assets, and we wanted to really strengthen and highlight that connection between the Old Town area. But we also wanted to reach out and plan a local system of multipurpose paths within and around Cottonwood, not just focused on the river specifically, but, but as we started talking to the community, the scope and the scale of the Trails Network continued to grow. And we wanted to promote recreational opportunities throughout Cottonwood. But first, we always ask why, and why bother? What's the point? Well, a Trails Master Plan is important because it first allows the community to evolve and to be heard and to become influential in the direction of the plan. So, that's the primary purpose of a Master Plan. But also, it allows you to assess current and potential trail uses, potential trail alignments. And finally, it, it provides a prioritized action plan for improvements and capital improvements. And part of this Master Plan has phasing, we have three phases we'll present to you, and we'll speak a little bit about funding sources also. This slide is essentially an outline of the slides to follow. Our approach was, we had a multi-jurisdictional collaboration, we looked at the regional context, we looked at the relevant planning documents, we took into account some case studies, we had a large robust public outreach effort, we had a questionnaire, we then developed a trail alignment with some focus areas that Aaron will address, and then signs and wayfinding, which Aaron can also address. So, multi-jurisdictional, of course, Verde Valley is, is a unique area in the state because there's so many different jurisdictions that about one another, and you guys are sort of friends and have somewhat interests that are in alignment. So, all these people, all these jurisdictions were part of the process.
Great.
The city, Yavapai County, Camp Verde, Clarkdale, Sedona, state parks, and the National Forest Service and the national parks. This is the regional context. There's an extensive existing trail system from Sedona and the Coconino and Prescott National Forests. There's a lot of trails along the river, there's, there's an extensive existing trails network that we wanted to look at and connect to, we didn't want to overlook any potential So, we started with a regional context when we were studying the area. Then we dove into all of the relevant planning, specifically your general plan. You have a two thousand nine and a twenty fifteen economic development plans, which we looked at, the Yavapai County Comprehensive Plan, your Parks and Recreation Planning. Charlie was help, very helpful with us and helping us understand these documents. And so, the current and recent efforts toward the trail development. We studied some case studies. We, we looked at six case studies, and among them were Flagstaff, Pima County, and Austin, Texas. But there were other communities, too. And the takeaway from, from what we learned from these case studies is that a successful plan is a collaborative process. There's a diversity of trail types, it's not just ten-foot-wide multi-use paths, there's a diversity of different typologies, and then there's a variety of funding sources. So, our public outreach process started in May with a questionnaire, which we made available online, and we also made available in person. We had social media-based outreach as well. We had stakeholder-focused groups. On May twenty-sixth, we had four stakeholder meetings, which were attended by many different stakeholders. And then, that night, we had the Recreation Center, Recreation Center Open House. So, we had, I guess that was a two-hour open house meeting that night. So, it was a very big day. And that day, we were also pushing out questionnaires to people on the street, be them citizens or just visitors, but we had people out there soliciting and collecting those hard copy questionnaires. We did present to the Parks and Rec, Commission twice, May twenty-sixth, and again on June thirtieth, and we thank you for your guidance and your participation in that. And then, we are presenting right now, on July nineteenth, with the final. So, that's been our public outreach. It was good, I mean, it really paid off, it was worthwhile. We got a hundred and seventeen respondents. We had seven meetings, we had twenty-two different stakeholder groups represented, and we received a hundred and seventeen respondents. And what we heard in a nutshell is, there is very strong community support for the development and connectivity of the existing and proposed trail network. We also heard there's strong emphasis behind connecting Riverfront Park, Old Town, and the residential areas to the Verde River Recreation. There's emphasis, too, to connect the Recreation Center to the community-wide trail system. And we also heard to coordinate with the regional partners and a diversity of not only trails, but trail users. We discovered there's a diversity of trail users, people are using these trails for different reasons, which was, which showed up in some of our data. So, I'll run through a series of slides really quickly. Now, this sort of graphically depicts some of the highlights of the questionnaire. How would you rate the importance of natural open space? Ninety-three percent of the respondents said it's either very important or important. So, there's a really strong, strong feeling about that. This one, which of the trail types and paths do you support being included? The most popular were nature trails and trails that link other existing local trails. And then, third was paved multi-use pathways. What type of trails in the final Master Plan would you be most likely to use? Well, seventy-four percent said they would like to use wilderness trails, and then sixty percent would also use paved and multi-use path. I know that doesn't add up to a hundred, but that's because we asked people to rank their top two, so there's some, there's some overlap. We asked them, how often do you use the recreational system, the trail system? Sixty-six percent said they use it at least once a month, the current system, as it is now. So, we, we hope to improve that, but that's all, that is a very big number already. We asked them, why do you primarily use the trail system? And eighty-eight percent said they do it for exercise, and then eighty-five percent said they like to get outside and enjoy nature. And then, if you don't, this is an interesting question, if you don't currently use the trails, why not? The highest reason was because people who didn't use the trails didn't know where the trails were located. So, part of this plan helps to resolve that solution or situation with some of the wayfinding and signage. Also, eighteen percent said it was due to the lack of trail connections. And then, finally, survey respondents were supportive of a wide variety of improvements to the trail system. From connections to shade to maintenance, all the way down to safety, and we also received and solicited some verbal feedback, and these are some of the comments we received. Again, just a groundswell of excitement and, and interest in this project. So, we'll get into the trail alignment, and then we'll look at some specific graphics. The trail alignment is, you know, here's, it's a little difficult to see, but it's actually pretty difficult to see. It's a good thing we have some follow-up slides which highlight it. Based on the community input, the align, we put together the alignment, we looked at the existing trails that existed, we tried to form loops of different varying scales, we also tried to bring in different interest areas. Oh, thank you. And then, we divided into three long-term phases. And the, the proposed network has a combination of hard paths in the urban areas and then soft trails in natural resource areas. So, Phase One, Phase One is really the crux of what got this started. It's the Old Town connection to Riverfront Park, connection to the Verde River. And there are some trails that, you know, go along Pinellas Street and some other east-west connections to try to get people up into the jail trail connection here. And then, also, once you get on the trail, you can get on the river trail, you go on down to Riverfront Park, and then, there's some node, node areas within the Riverfront Park. And that's Phase One. Phase Two looks at moving south, so taking the network down south to the recreation area center, pardon me, and to the middle school and to the elementary school. So, this is, you'll see the alignment, trail alignments begin to be more orthogonal because we're starting to use the existing street network. And then, finally, Phase Three, that's the long-term, you know, part of the dream. Phase Three is moving way out, where we get down to the high school, Mingus Union High School, and Cottonwood Ranch, and Prescott National Forest. You, these green dots along the perimeter, these recognized existing regional trail connections, where we're trying to reach out and capitalize on and take advantage of and accept and welcome those users into this trail network. Aaron, did you want to talk about?
I'll...
Get to the next. So, we, we can share with you later, if you'd like, some thoughts we have on grant funding and how you can accomplish a lot of the funding for these. In a nutshell, though, it comes down to having a diverse income stream. So, there are grants that can be pursued and that are available, but there's also other mechanisms to, to get funding, which you can then leverage against cost-sharing grant programs, too. So, what, the, what we have seen successful communities do, who develop these trail networks, is implement an, an impact fee program. So, we know that the state has recently put into place some laws, making it a little more challenging and difficult to utilize the impact fee programs, but we have successfully worked with a couple of communities, Marana and Tucson, to help them develop an impact fee program. And what they're doing with that money is basically, it's, it's not a big funding stream, it's not winning the lottery, it just is sort of a trickle that comes in, and it helps you get a little bit of money to either buy some specific improvements or to leverage against cost-sharing grants that are also available. So, it's a good mechanism to keep, because really, it's successful, just like the trail types and the users, you need a diversity of income in order to help pay for and develop I'm gonna allow Aaron a chance here to talk about the fun, good stuff.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Mayor Jones.
Welcome.
Members. Thank you for having us. I'm just gonna run through these real quickly. This is some of the graphics that we came up with. I've worked specifically on the signage and monumentation piece, which is another portion of the project. So, this is before, after, with some of the signage, monumentation that we've designed. Cottonwood's got a really great vernacular for materials and, including the, the river rock look, it's all over the historic buildings around here, and some weathered steel. So, we kind of took that and developed some, a signage, signage and monumentation package, or kind of seed the whole gamut as we go through. This is near the Ten Street Bridge going over to Dead Horse. Here is the, a potential connection, trail connection over from Pinellas, and I think it's forth, over to, over the ditch there, Blowout Creek. Blowout Creek there. So, this is the existing view. There is the, what...
Love that. Yeah, I just, I was so excited when I saw that, that's great.
So, we've got, you know, a gateway piece here that would be visible from Main Street, draw, draw pedestrians and bikers down. And this would be a great gateway to the Riverfront Park. There, you can see there's mine, signage in here, maybe it's directional signage, it can be interpretive signage, using the, you know, the river rock and the red concrete and some of the prevalent materials. This is a planned view of the same thing, the river or the, the bridge going over. This is a planned view of the same thing, the river or the, the bridge going over, widening, proposing to widen a trail and Riverfront Park. This is a 10th Street going into Riverfront Park in the south. I thought this was a major connection point where you have a trail that runs along the Cottonwood Ditch, and another trail going into the park here, and we've got a pedestrian, a, a note, a biker pedestrian there with some signage and imitation. This is what it looks like, 3D perspective, you know, it's got a nice sign welcoming visitors to the park, just letting, letting everybody know that they're entering Riverfront Park and it's a special area. This is Yavapai, and the jail trail is back over here. We're proposing make it more pedestrian and biker-friendly through here, new pavings, new fencing, some signage probably at both ends to direct bikers, pedestrians. Now, we'll flip through these real quick, but this is kind of the signage vernacular, this goes from the big guys, this is the 10th Street, south entrance.
That's really awesome. Mm-hmm, I love that. Whatever team member or team members thought that up, that's really great.
We've got the blue heron, which is kind of a prevalence, kind of a symbol of cottonwood. Here is the, the gateway again, side, some seating, just kind of a nice space. Then you get down to, this is actually the existing signs, and that's the jail trail. So we took this and ran with it, really thought this sign was nice with the materials. This is another version of the, kind of the same sign type, could be a, a major trailhead sign, basically, where you want a big impact. Got a little laser cut out of the weathered steel, that's the blue heron in flight. And this, moving down, there's minor trailhead signs, where you can incorporate some of the stone, and these can fit in smaller spaces. Another version, maybe this version is more in the natural areas, closer to the river. It's got the corrugated steel mesh with the rock, the gadion piece, so that the rock would be kind of loose in there. Just another way to use the materials. Moving down, these signs would be more for trails along the streets, and just kind of general correction signs throughout the trail and trail network. These would be interpretive signs, can be used in the same materials, different options, you know, you can use the gadion, some a little more if there's less space, not using gadion. And you can place these, I, I envision that these would go kind of along the Verde River, key areas, talk about, you know, the birds and the fish and the, some of the history of the area.
It's great.
And then smaller signs, with some, some map signs, I guess. They'd have a little bit, a little map, probably about eight, eight inches by eight, eight inches, just to let people know where they're at, it'll help, you know. Right now, the, the network of trails around the Verde, the river is kind of a, it's kind of a maze, so these would probably direct people through, get them to, you know, where they want to go, either it's, either the Riverfront Park, or Dozy Goo, or, or Old Town. And then all the way down to just a simple carcinite trail marker that might denote, as you're going along the trail, just to keep people going along the trail, or it might mark an area where not to enter, if there's a trail that wants, doesn't want to be used, or people are, if there is a trail that needs to be blocked off. And then, finally, reintroducing the, the cottonwood, weathered steel plaque, that you may have noticed, just another interpretive option that maybe you may be able to access information off of your phone as you're walking through the, the trail system.
So what if somebody would fall down on them? This is your mother speaking. That stick might get poked, that stick might get poked in your eye or whatever.
Maybe, well, it's kind of, you know, off to the side.
Yeah.
I don't know, maybe we-
Those already were missed on the trail.
I know, I know, there's quite a few that-
Yeah, some got washed away and some got-
Yeah, there used to be a lot more metal stuff down there. I think Mayor Von Gossig made some of that, or designed it and built it years ago.
We thought that was a really unique, cool idea, and liked it, so that brought back.
So, we're very close to finishing. I did want to bring out the, one thing about this alignment. This, our alignment relies heavily on the existing parks that are in your community. It goes into and out of, and it, you know, and it assumes these park spaces are node areas, and so we're starting to develop signs like Erin's developing, and we're starting to present links and nodes and, you know, seating areas and bike parking areas within these park spaces, but, so this is a trails master plan. It may also be a, a good opportune moment to think about doing a parks master plan as well, because as, as these things start to get developed, you can see how they would be an attractive point, and you want to be logical about, you know, how these nodes interact with the park spaces, and you don't want to go, well, let's put one there, and then oops, it was, you know, 100 feet from where it should have been, and, well, because of the, anyway, I just wanted to, to bring up that in, in our internal design team discussions, that's been something that's been part of our discussion, that it would be a really great time to use this and sort of springboard from this into a Parks and Recreation master plan, but, so-
And that's been on our list every budget session for at least, what, three years, if not four now? So hopefully, one of these years, four, do you think? Mr. Pratt?
Yeah, I think, first of all, I want to commend you on your work, I think you did great work.
Great work.
I appreciate your vision on, I think, and I think this would be an asset to our community, and just as we recently supported the maintenance and upkeep of the national parks, I think this is important too, and it's not just for enriching our lives, but again, for the mental and physical health of our, our community.
Citizens, yeah.
So, this one seems like a no-brainer, because you said, we've been talking about this for a while, let's get a trail system, and just really good work, appreciate your-
I mean, who would have ever dreamed six months ago that we would have a plan like this? It wasn't even in our thoughts at the time, but, so thank you to the Walton Family Foundation, and especially the Nature Conservancy, for realizing that, oh, this is something that needs to be done, and jumping on it and helping us get it done. And Casey, and I also wanted to mention Al Hilberger is here from the Parks and Recreation Commission, and he also was a big part of that commission that helped us out, so we appreciate you, Al. Any other questions, comments from the public? Did you see anything that you can make better, or?
No, I, excuse me, Mayor, I know Charlie should be pretty excited, you've been working on this for so long, this has got to be pretty exciting for you.
Yes, Charlie's been working on trails for years. So can you believe it, Charlie, that this happened in six months? This is the kind of thing you've been dreaming about for 20 years now, to actually get something done in less than, than at least 10 years, right? So thank you so much, I think the council seems to be quite pleased with it.
Yeah.
Madam Mayor, I, I think they were also going to talk about potential funding sources, is-
Okay.
-that part of your presentation as well?
Um, yes, sir, it can be right now, if you'd like.
If the council would like to hear-
That would be wonderful, yes, because all the help we can get would be so appreciated.
Sure, um, well, thanks for the opportunity. There are some grants that we're aware of, and then Richard is also, has in mind some other grant sources, but the ones that we-
And he's an awesome grant writer.
No.
Oh, you'd love it.
So, one that we thought of is from the Land and Water Conservation Fund, it's federal money, it's administered by Arizona State Parks, it's, because it's federal money, you're compelled to use prevailing wage laws, so there are some strings attached, so you kind of need to be strategic about how you implement those funds. You can, you can build things with less construction involvement, you can use those monies for things that require less construction, you wouldn't want to build a road with it, but you could maybe build some sign kiosks, or use it for some additional design work, or additional little parts and pieces here and there. That's the Land and Water Conservation Fund, it's, again, it's federal money. Then there is a FAST Act, it's an acronym, F-A-S-T, it's a federal grant source, it has three components, one is for roads, which we wouldn't be able to utilize, one is for alternative transportation, which is for bike and pedestrian, and those are paved pathways, if you're going to widen a sidewalk, or do an on-street bike improvement, or a hot-activated signal crossing, you could probably go for some of those monies, that's administered by ADOT. And then the third component for the FAST is the trails piece, and it's for soft surface trails. So, in our plan, we're, your plan, pardon me, in your plan, we are proposing to have some soft surface trails up near the river area where it may flood occasionally, and then some hard surface trails and on-street trails further into town. So, there's, because you have a diversity of trail types, you can pursue a diversity of grants and funding. So, that's from the FAST Act, that's trails, and that's administered by Arizona State Parks. And then, of course, there are other, you know, Richard mentioned Heritage Grant funding and, and a variety of other sources, and a lot of times, as we mentioned in the presentation, they're going to need matching funds, sometimes even 10% matching, 15, 20% matching funds. But in order to, to get a, you know, in order to really successfully, for the long term, create a sustainable funding source, it is probably a good idea to look at implementing some sort of impact fee program. Now, it's a program that, you know, you develop a program, and, and once it's in place, the money comes in, trickles in, trickles in, and then, you know, you can start to leverage it and use that, and match funds, and find other sources of money.
So, a question about that, I thought we just, the state made it very, very difficult to initiate any kind of impact fees, is that still, I mean, how does that work with this?
As, Madam Mayor, Council, there's, there's a whole process that we have to go through with, with studies and findings and justifications and, and costs for the public improvements, for the necessary public improvements, we would be installing with, with any impact It's something we could look into, but yes, the legislature made it a whole lot harder, especially for things other than core public services like, like utilities.
Water, wastewater, even that, we gave up our impact fees on for now.
Because of the, the process, I mean, those are, impact fees are certainly available for those kinds of things, that's beyond question, but it's a question of justifying, doing the studies, and then setting the, the fees and being able to justify the fees based on the, the costs and the, and the projected future needs.
Yes, and we want less government, right? The legislature of less government, just do more studies. Anyway, so, the impact fees, that's an idea that might work, but we would have to go through a lot of red tape probably, and a lot of expensive studies to get there.
It, Madam Mayor, it may, and members of council, it may pay off, I mean, you're, you're right, but we, it's not, they've made it more difficult, but it's not impossible, and it's, you know, it may not even be prohibitively difficult to get to. We've worked with Marana and Tucson to help them develop their impact fee programs since that state legislation-
Okay, so you have ideas on how to-
Yeah.
-still be able to use-
Yeah.
-that funding source.
Yeah, because if you get a grant, I mean, you can buy two or three miles, and then you get another grant, and it's sort of, you know, you can do it, but it becomes a little more piecemeal, and then pretty soon it's 20 years on, and it hasn't really, you know, you haven't gotten it all in place.
And Charlie would be in his rocking chair by then, right?
Do want to, I did want to follow up with the idea that be, some of our trails are on private land, and we just went ahead and drew the map because, hey, it's a long-term visioning document, we want to put that map together, we want to put the line on the map, we want to present the vision. That's kind of how you might have to look at the funding too, you know, maybe impact fees don't work in the next five years, but long-term, if you have them in mind, it could be part of your long-term solution to make this thing implemented.
Thank you.
So, did I answer your question well enough?
Yes.
Okay.
Did you have some more?
Did I answer your question?
Yes.
Are there any other?
Was that it then?
Yes.
As ideas for funding? Mr. Pratt, your hand is up.
I'm wondering if we're at the point where we should make a motion.
Did I ask the public whether they wanted to speak yet? No? Would the public, any members of the public like to talk about this agenda item? Mr. Tim? Okay, all right. Well, you guys did a phenomenal, phenomenal job in a very short time. This is how government should run.
Exactly.
Thank you very much, it was our pleasure, and we were grateful for the opportunity, thank you.
All right. So, Mr. Pratt, you're-
I move to approve the proposed Verde River Recreation Plan as presented.
Second.
Mr. Pratt made the motion, Councilmember Norman seconded it, all in favor. All right, any opposed? Motion carries.
Great work.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Casey, and everybody else who helped out. Okay, item number three is Resolution Number 2847, I'm circling it, we'll see if I forget it. Appointing Cynthia Burton a member of the City of Cottonwood Parks and Recreation Commission, and establishing her term of office.
Madam Mayor and Council, when your packet is actually information on Cindy Burton, just to give you a background, we have three term expirations on the Parks and Recreation Commission as of August 16th. That is Cindy Burton, Al Hilberger, Carol Nielsen, and Cindy had identified as the only one at this point in time that was interested, and took her application very quickly from the city manager's office and, and Human Resources, because if we're going to be down three, it's going to be difficult in our August meeting to probably implement a quorum. So, so that's why I wanted to make sure this got on as quick as we possibly could. Cindy has been, she would be here tonight, she's caring for her older brother down in the Phoenix area, and, who has health issues, and so she is apologizing through me that she would like to be here, but, as well as speak to the council. She's been very active with the council, and she's great to have on board, she has a lot of questions usually, as well as she, she likes working directly with Parks and Recreation staff, so I'm just leaving that open to the council as to what they would like to do.
Councilmembers.
A no-brainer.
Yep, members of the public. Any comments? I would entertain a motion.
I move to approve Resolution Number 2847, appointing Cindy Burton a member of the Parks and Recreation Commission for a three-year term. Parks and Recreation Commission for a three-year term.
Second.
Okay, so, Mr. Pratt made the motion. The vice mayor seconded it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Deputy clerk, please read Resolution Number 2847 by title only.
Resolution Number 2847, a resolution of the mayor and city council of the City of Cottonwood, Arizona, appointing Cynthia Burton a member of the City of Cottonwood Parks and Recreation Commission, and establishing her term of office. Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Item number four, waiver of municipal code section 8.52.020, camping on public property. To allow overnight camping at the Old Town Activity Park during the Thunder Valley Rally event scheduled for September 16th through 18th in 2016. And, Mr. Faust, are you presenting? Oh, Mr. Faust, there's Mr. Hezekiah right there. Mr. Allen.
Well, as I said, he's got it okay. I was going to say, basically, the same thing with Tilted Earth, you have a glamour camp, and it's called glam.
Glam, I mean.
So, you get an idea of the interior setup on the tents as well. This is something that we'd like to do, and I'll turn it over to Nettis.
Okay.
Madam Mayor, council, we were approached, it was kind of through a partnership with one of the local adventure companies, and there's a company down in Phoenix, it's a local company, it's family-owned, their name is Stout Tents. And the story goes is that his wife, which is Caitlin Stout, went to go purchase a tent. She liked the European-style tents such as this, got it from Europe, and her husband, who is a parachutist in the Army, was looking at it going, "I can build something better than this." And so, they started manufacturing their own tents. They also do events such as Bonnaroo and other type of large festivals where it's in a rural area, and they're trying to get more bodies and heads and beds to support the locally economy and to support the event. So, we also use this idea, as Richard said, with Tilted Earth. Moderate success this year, but we're hoping that it catches on as people start understanding what this concept is. Thunder Valley Rally brings a unique opportunity, because we have a lot of people who are coming to the area and are looking for places to stay, because hotels get booked out years in advance for this event. Also, we also have individuals that are on motorcycles who don't necessarily have a lot of luggage space. So, bringing their own tent can be challenging. So, we have a location, the Old Town Activity Park, which is really close to the event. We've tried to incorporate it in years past with the event, but you might as well put that park in Phoenix, because people have a hard time finding it for some reason, because it's off that main street where everybody wants to be and people watch. So, the thought is, because we're trying to generate more revenue for Thunder Valley Rally, keep more people here locally, and bring in a diverse revenue stream, is to do camping. So, we're looking to partner with Stout Tents. They would offer the packages, they would sell the packages through their website, and you would get 20% of each package as they're sold. They would set them up and have camp posts there during the entire event. We also don't want to open it up, or the TBR committee doesn't want to open it up, to campers in general, because we don't want, every two square feet is taken up with a tent, and that becomes kind of a hazard. We want it to be planned and coordinated. So, that's why we're asking for the waiver of municipal code section 8.52.020 to allow camping at the Old Town Activity Park.
So, that's just the part between City Hall and the youth center?
Yeah, it's the old ball field, basically.
Again, good idea.
So, Ms. Allen?
I have to say, it's a great idea to do that, because when you go out to somewhere in a national park, like Lake Powell or something, and you camp out your spot, you can start stepping on each other's toes, you can get a little grumpy, because he's too close to me. I think that's a great idea to resolve that issue, and still have a really neat way for people to stay close to the event.
Right.
It's a great idea.
So, how many, oh, excuse me, go ahead.
The upper packages, if someone decides to, actually include a Jacuzzi tub.
Oh, boy. Wow. So, do they, they have to, like, make reservations beforehand?
Yes.
Of course, they don't just bring them in, they have to have somebody to go into them?
Right.
Before they bring them?
Yep.
Okay. I know I saw some of the people at Tilted Earth that were staying in those, wandering around and...
They come with a full queen size. This one shows two double beds, but, and you can get a single unit add beds, it's an additional fee, but standard, they come with a queen-size bed, furnishings, camp lanterns, a little camp stove, all kinds of stuff.
Wow. And a rug in the front porch, for the front porch.
Totally.
So, how did that work for Tilted Earth? Did...
You know, we knew this year was kind of, because Glamping's kind of, it's this resurgence right now.
Right.
People are starting to catch on to it.
People don't know we have it yet.
Yeah, and interestingly enough, before our event, Stout Tents did a corporate Toyota event, where they took all 100 of the Tacoma engineers and took them to Kingman, and did this $1 million excursion for these Toyota engineers. So, we knew, but Tilted Earth, we knew it was going to be something that we were going to put teasers out this year, but the hopes are to grow in years' future, and we could actually expand it to softball fields and Little League complex, and almost double the amount of rooms that are available in the area.
Awesome. That would be great. So, like you said, keep more people in Cottonwood.
Yeah.
Because we have a huge regional impact of about $1.7 million. I mean, I guess, is that from Flagstaff to Prescott? Is that kind of considered?
The study looked at Guevara Pike County.
Guevara Pike County. Okay, so that's, it doesn't go quite to Flagstaff then. So, yeah, to keep more people here, that would be great. Really great. So, any comments from members of the public on this item? Or more questions by members of the council? I would entertain a motion.
I move to approve a waiver of Cottonwood Municipal Code Section 8.52.020 to allow overnight camping at the Old Town Activity Park during the Thunder Valley Rally event on September 16th through 18th, 2016.
Second.
Mr. Pratt made the motion. The vice mayor seconded it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number five, closure of Main Street between Pima and Cactus Street and city parking lots in Old Town during the Thunder Valley Rally event scheduled in Old Town from September 16th through 18th, 2016.
Oh.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, council, so basically, the map you have in front of you is an overlay picture of Old Town where the event takes place. The basic gist of the traffic control plan this year is kind of, it's what we've done for walking on Main in last year with Thunder Valley Rally. The merchants in Old Town really want to make sure we don't divert all traffic up Willard and around, because they feel coming down Main Street and getting that view of Main, of Old Town with the stage at the bottom is imperative. It helps brand the community, it helps sell the event. There's a lot of people who may not know the event's going on, and they'll cruise down to check it out, and they end up staying. You also have a lot of the traffic that's going to the train that will use that detour through Old Town, still check things out, and they might come back and experience the event. So, basically, traffic will come down Main Street, and it'll turn left on Pima, and then down Cactus Street to get to the detour, to get to the Clarkdale area. Motorcycle event parking will be from Willard to Pima. That'll be reserved for just motorcycle parking, but it, and then, from basically the tavern parking lot down all the way to Cactus Street, the road will be blocked to just motorcycle parking only. If you notice, we try to keep most of the infrastructure off Main Street on purpose, so that on Sunday, it takes us less time to get the road open and get traffic back flowing to revitalize this area on Sunday, so people can get back down to experience restaurants, shopping, and anything else if they're still in town. So, all the vendors and everything are set up on parking lots, so the parking lots will reopen on Sunday at 11:00 a.m., whereas the street itself will reopen Sunday at 9:00 a.m. The closure will begin Friday at 4:00 a.m., and that will include the parking lots that are being used and Main Street. We do that because it tends to be a congested nightmare if you start staging closures down the street. We've found in the past that it just doesn't work, and it's easier, because you're not trying to divert traffic once people are already down there. So, that's basically the gist of the traffic control plan. The tavern parking lot and the Old Town Jail parking lot are basically our two liquor control areas, where we'll have serving. Those areas will have security, as long, as well as six-foot-tall chain link fencing that is temporary. There's also be the vendor areas and stage areas to create little atmospheres where people can dig out, have fun, and stay for a little bit. And then, you can see the park where Glamping will be is also where vendor parking. We stage vendor setup, so that if it's not this mass exodus onto Old Town for people to set up and try to jockey for positions, we do it based on vendor size. Large vendors go out first, and then they go down to the smaller 10-by-tens. Any questions?
So, I see this great big square by the Old Town Mission that is, I know, doesn't have a lot in it. Would there be any way that we could do a public-private partnership and ask them if we could use that for parking?
Um...
Or would it be worth it, or?
Madam Mayor, where exactly you're talking about again?
The Old Town Mission's parking lot.
Okay, next to the Civic Center?
No. The one that's behind the Leadbetter parking place, I think.
You know, it's private property. I don't know if we would want to approach them to try to work something out. I'm sure they'd be have some COY exchanges there, but anything's possible, I can approach them.
Seems like that would be a spot that we could use.
Seems like it may be a way for them to make some money.
Yeah.
When you put it that way, if they charge for parking, but boy, that would sure help out, to have those spaces during that time.
We do have the shuttles. There are a lot of people who park off-site with the shuttle.
Right.
We'll approach them.
But I mean, even if, that would fit, that would fit a lot of motorcycles, too. Just a thought.
And the city manager is correct. What's interesting is, all through Old Town, the kind of free market takes over, and if there's any available space, people sell it. Rite's a prime example, where they'll sell their parking space, and they'll actually do pretty well doing it.
Yeah.
And this makes a lot of sense, because it's safety.
Yeah.
And it's worth it for them.
Even the Iron Horse, I mean, if you could have an agreement with them, their parking lot's not always full during those times, because it's constrained, but, of course, that's across from Tim's house, too, that probably... Are you leaving town that night, day? Are you leaving town during the Thunder Valley Rally this year?
I haven't decided.
You haven't decided? Okay, we were just talking about trying to find extra parking, and I was talking about the Iron Horse Inn parking lot, that that could add some parking areas.
I guess I would approach them.
Yeah. Well, we would. We would, but we just, it's your neighborhood, so...
Yeah, that surface may not be real conducive.
To motorcycles.
Well, not for motorcycles, but it could handle some cars that might want to go eat somewhere downtown.
It's true.
And I think, Madam Mayor, that what Billy kind of works out with the merchants up and down the street is...
He lets the merchants park there during that time, and that's a good, a good idea. That's great, that he's, I know they're very cooperative and helpful.
We also do merchant parking around the Old Town Activity Park as well.
Mm-hmm.
The whole goal with the TBR committee is, they really made it a point to let the Old Town Association know that we realize we're in your backyard, this event takes place, we try to have as least impact as possible on Old Town, and we appreciate them allowing us to have the event down there and working with us.
Okay, and I did ask the city manager for some information on the value of Thunder Valley Rally, and you shared some of that, and he forwarded it to me. Could you forward that to all of the council members? That'd be great. And whoever else wants it from the public can also have it. Okay, so, I guess the question to the council, members of the public, would any members of the public like to comment on this item? So, the question for the council is, do you want to close down the street at those times for Thunder Valley Rally?
Any motion?
Certainly, would you please?
I move to authorize the closure of Main Street between Pima and Cactus Street, as well as the parking lots located at the city council chambers, tavern restaurant, finance, HR, civic center, city hall, Old Town, Activity Park, and the Old Town Jail, and to reserve on-street parking areas on Main Street between Willard Street and Pima Street for motorcycle parking only for the Thunder Valley Rally event September 16th through 18th, 2016.
Second.
Okay, so Ms. Allen made the motion, and Mr. Pratt seconded it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, claims and adjustments?
I move to pay the claims.
Second.
Mr. Pratt made the motion to pay the claims, and councilmember Allen seconded it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Motion carries. I move to adjourn.
Third.
And the mayor made the motion, and councilmember Norman seconded it. All in favor?
Aye.
And adjourned. [laughing].[1756.32]